Please silence your cell phones.
How you doing?
Okay.
At this time, I'll ask Councilman Bradford to lead us in the invocation. And Councilman Everson, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Let's pray. Gracious Father, we come again, thanking you for this day and for this opportunity to come before the citizens of this city as we transact this business of the city. We thank you, Lord, for your blessings. We thank you for all that you've done for us. We invite you to the meeting, Lord, and to this meeting, and to direct our hearts and our minds that what we do here today will be pleasing in our sight. We certainly ask the blessings upon the mayor and council members. Lord, we continue to pray for the safety and the well-being of this city. Let us all work together, Lord, because we know that all things work together for those that love you. If they love you, we pray your blessings upon this city. It is in thy name that we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair now recognizes the Deputy Clerk for roll call.
Councilman Bradford.
Present.
Councilman Everson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
Ms. Porter.
Present.
Councilman Flurry.
Present.
Councilwoman Lynch.
Here.
Councilman Boe.
Here.
Tomorrow, I'll be seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and city council meeting for February 13, 2017, and February 14, 2017. Now we come to awards and recognitions of distinguished guests. Does council member have any of the recognizance at this time? If you, members of the council, Mr. Rob Broussard has requested to speak in regards to the UDC. Does anyone have an objection? Oliver's not here, so if there's no objection, I'll ask Mr. Broussard to come forward at this time to speak. And please come forward, Mr. Broussard, and your name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Flurry, council members, mayor. My name is Rob Broussard. I live at 451 Santa First Street, Port, Louisiana. And I would like to address the UDC, proposed UDC vote that's coming up. I'd like to ask each and every one of you to vote no on that, because I feel like that there's been too many amendments that have been created, one of which deals with the situation that we faced in our neighborhood, the many storage facilities. And I find it very ironic that y'all, that that amendment came up just a few short days after we had something like that that was put down our throat. And in regards to that, you know, we have a really good memory. I hope that when we look at stuff in the UDC, like the house that may be going in over there in Highland, that what we recognize is that a good attorney can alter the UDC or change the codes. And so, you know, why have a code if you're not going to follow it? And so, I see that house going in over in Highland that doesn't have the current permits. I see that as a way for y'all to get economic revenue from property taxes, just like we were told that storage facility was going to provide an economic benefit to our neighborhood. So, I think it's kind of hypocritical if you say it to one neighborhood that, you know, you're going to get property taxes out of this kind of building on your property in your neighborhood, and then you turn around and say, you know, no to somebody that wants to move a house in a residential area. So, you know, I think the UDC is full of situations like that, and I would like all of you to vote against it, until you get it straightened out and get it worked out where we don't have 55 amendments added to it.
Could I respond to that?
Yes, yeah.
Well, Rob, you know, certainly a difference in the two situations is, one is a situation where somebody did not apply for any permits at all and moved something in without seeking the appropriate clearance. Now, I realize you disagree with the decision that was made on the storage building. However, you had an opportunity to appeal that still, and, you know, we had an opportunity to appeal that decision. And the whole reason that decision was before us is because that applicant did apply for it appropriately beforehand to get the approval. So, there is a very big difference in those two situations there. There's a lot of differences, but that's a huge difference in that the UDC wouldn't even have been consulted, be it passed or not passed, wouldn't even have been consulted in the situation where the house was moved, because they did not apply for permits. So, they did not apply for any review. So, that's a very different situation. I understand you're still angry and looking for a means to express that, and, you know, don't take that away from you, but I do think that these are some very different situations. And so, I just thought that's worth clarifying.
Well, I really think that y'all need to, if you really want to know the truth, I think you need to defund the MPC until you seek a new executive director, but that's y'all's business. But when you really get down to it, Jeff, it's called representative democracy, and we would hope that in every neighborhood, that the people that are elected to represent them would do so. And so, we remind you, Mr. Everson, that you represented your neighborhood in terms of that house, but our council member did not represent the wishes of the neighborhood in that vote that he led the charge of. So, and I'm sorry he's absent, or I'm sorry he's late. So, I hate to talk about somebody when they're not sitting in front of me, but by the same token, you know, we make rules and we change laws at a whim, whether it's a code or not. You, you know, you can sit here and have an attorney change the MPC code and work it through city council, so you know.
And I will say, certainly, I understand why the, you know, why you would have a concern about there being language added into the UDC about self-storage, but I actually think you would be supportive of the language that was proposed, because it makes it a special exception use, or it makes it a use that requires additional review, as opposed to making it a use by right. So, it actually is, serves to your interest.
Well, it actually, it gives the current storage facility, like, I don't want to say a monopoly, but it sure grants them their usage in their way, and then you would change it from everybody else in the future. And when you talk, when you use the word "economic development" to support an issue like that, just remember that, you know, if we took a dollar bill and we folded it here, half of that money might stay in Shreveport, but the other half might go to Austin, Texas. So, you know, let's make sure we're talking apples to apples, Mr. Everson, because I noticed this, that regardless of the MPC code, y'all can change it. Y'all can change those codes, for whatever reason that you choose to, you can vote to change them, or alter them, or amend them.
That's actually, that's actually really one of the goals of the UDC, is to minimize the amount of variances and exceptions.
And there's already 55 amendments, is that correct?
Yeah, but those amendments are amendments to a base law, so those are amendments that are made to something before its law. It's not as if those are changes that are going back to something that is already a law. Those are changes to something to make sure that we pass the best base law.
Please, don't reference what was the law, because there was a law that said 20,000 square feet for that storage site. There was an ordinance that said you would be limited to 20,000. That man right there told us one thing one day, and we read in the paper something totally different, you know, and...
Rob, I think you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Flurry. I appreciate you, city council members, listening to me.
Any other council member at this time? Lenis, are you on the speak? We got you on the board up here.
No. I'm good.
Lenis, you have something to say? Somebody from IT, for some reason, my computer's not logging on, and when I got here initially, some, Oliver and I, stuff was mixed up, so I wonder...
We'll get somebody right on.
I think we're working on something in the back.
Councilwoman Lynch.
Lenis says she's trying to be like art. She's trying to keep her as a minimum.
Councilwoman Lynch.
No.
Yes, I have a question for you.
Oh, okay.
We've received, and other members of the council, we've received an unsigned pistle from some taxpayer, or somebody, I don't know, concerning. Did you receive that?
Yes. I mean, I just saw it.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm just asking members of the council, I don't think that we ought to accept anything that they're not willing to put their signature on. File mine appropriately.
Yeah.
What's this? We got a pistle from someone concerning us, our duties as trash picker. They left it at the council, but they did not sign it, put their name to it. What I'm just saying, those things like that ought to go straight to the trash. If you're not willing to put your name on it, then we ought to not be bothered with it, because we have no idea who, because every one of us have picked up trash. And this person here says, council members want to do something constructive, get out and pick trash up, but they don't want to put their name to it. And I'm saying that for us to address it, that's where it all gets...
You're not saying that it should be put in the trash before we see it, are you?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm just saying that they're not putting their name to it.
Well, I mean, they don't do it at Crime Stoppers either, but that doesn't mean we don't look at it. I'm just trying to see...
Okay. No, I'm not saying to take it away from any council member, but I question that why a person wouldn't want to put their signature on it.
Well, there may be a lot of reasons a person may not want to put their signature on it, but I just want to make sure we at least see it.
Okay.
I mean, we, it may not, you know, you can't formally address it, but, you know, what they're saying here is nothing that I don't hear every day, or that I see every day, so whether there's a name on it or not is not going to change the fact that, you know, that they're talking about how filthy and trashy some parts of the city, you know, still are. So, I mean, I don't know who it is, but I'm like, okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on then. Any other council member at this time? Okay, Mayor Tyler.
No, sir, thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Nothing yet?
Nothing today.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I know you gave us plenty of opportunity, and I'm sorry I was distracted, but I do just want to briefly, and I'll say more thoroughly tomorrow, but I do just want to briefly thank the city for all of the departments that have something to do with these Mardi Gras parades. I mean, it is a tremendous amount of work, and if you're involved in them, and if you're on these sites or along these routes, or if you live in one of these neighborhoods that host these, you know, it's amazing to see how fast the crews are there afterwards, how efficient the public safety officers are, I mean, they're just...
And I got that on my mouse, it's for tomorrow.
Do a great job, so we just want to thank you all for that, because it's really...
I'm going to thank them tomorrow.
Really impressive. Okay, Councilman Bradford is not...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to, I'd like to say anything, but I want to say, in reference, Mayor, in reference to...
City council meeting, hopefully you're addressing the council.
Well, I mean, of course, I'm addressing the mayor, but certainly I'm addressing the council.
Mayor Tyler.
Yes.
Excuse me, Senator, I'm Councilman Bradford.
I was going to, I was going to ask you in regards, I see you're calling a meeting to further address the crime issue on Wednesday, is that Wednesday?
Yes, sir. It's with the steering committee.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to follow it with them to see what their groups have come up with over the past few months. We promise to do that, and then we'll have a big meeting afterward, but certainly you're welcome to come to the steering committee meeting.
Okay.
That's why I think we all sent, did you all get the...
I got the email.
Yes, the email.
Yeah. Let me ask you, Mayor, and maybe the chief want to comment on this, you know, I mean, the crime statistics came out, somebody asked you, were they on the web, was they on our city website? Are they? Do you know if they're on there now?
We call the chief.
I mean, you can just look and see if they're on the website.
I didn't, I was asked this morning whether or not, there's somebody said they wasn't, it wasn't posted on the website.
Okay.
Okay.
Your question was...
Yeah, Chief, I was, I was going to ask the coordinator on how to follow, of course. I was asking, one of the constituents asked me where the crime statistics came out over the print media and as well as the mass media, and they didn't see it on the city's or the police website. Is that, had that been posted on the website, those statistics?
It should be. This is my first time hearing otherwise, so it would be something that we would have to check and try to ascertain what the problem is, but that's the normal, normal thing. It is posted on our website, so why they can't get to it, or if it's not there, I have no answer.
Okay, I haven't followed up, the course was asked to me less than an hour ago, by a constituent said that they did not see it, even though the, both the TV media have posted on all their websites. But I want to ask you, and we all understand, and it was stated within the report, some of the issues that, including those that beyond control of government or policing. But can you think of anything that you could suggest or request that the council may be able to provide to you as you continue to put together your strategic plan in addressing these issues of crime and violence?
Your continued support, first and foremost, and then as we put different operations together, if it requires additional funding beyond that which we have departmentally, if we, through the proper channels, make those requests, and money's could be made available for different operations. We're planning on one right now relative to all the robberies that's going on. We're getting together, as we discussed this morning, trying to put our operation together to address those and hopefully come up with some effective results. So, in the meantime, just whatever support that we are receiving from you all publicly and privately, we would greatly appreciate that.
Have any consideration given to requesting any assistance from the sheriff department as relates to some type of preventative proactive measures in covering some of these robberies? I see that's a very, very large spike in robberies.
I just answered you the best I could as far as the detail, but I think we should make an effort departmentally, because prior to me assuming this role as the chief of police, when we had spikes in robberies, whether they were business robberies or personal, personal robberies, our tactical robbery unit, our investigative unit, even if it was in our office of special investigations, would get together and put teams together or an operation together. And to my understanding, those netted results, so before we reach out to the sheriff department, I think that our agencies should be allowed to do what they have been professional in doing in time past.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's see. Reports, we'll be looking at property standards. Does anybody have a question on property standards? Mr. Green, I see. Thank you. Good time. See, we'll be getting a master plan report. Got it. Okay. Thompson, any public hearings?
We have none.
And adding items to the agenda?
We have none at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. President, none for you?
None that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
And no adding of the legislation? Public comments, confirmations, and appointments?
You have one, Mr. Chairman, Deputy Chief of Police, William R. Gooden.
Any questions for Mr. Gooden? Consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, under the consent agenda legislation, there's nothing for introduction. There are some items under adoption. Resolution 33 declares the official intent of the city of Shreveport to reimburse certain capital expenditures for police and fire vehicles and equipment and building improvements from proceeds from lease purchase agreements. These are all agreements that were voted on and approved in the 2017 budget. So, those are police vehicles, ambulances, and then money for the elevators here at Government Plaza.
Now, this is regular agenda?
Regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 12 authorizes the mayor to execute a donated agreement between the city of Shreveport and LRI Ventures LLC herein called Owners, and acting herein through Judith Bruce, manager for the private water and sewer improvements for Elkins subdivision, Unit 3, and related facilities. Tomorrow, the administration will ask that this be removed from the agenda. Resolution 20, accepting dedications of Sugar Leaf Trail Right-of-Way in Blood Center Properties subdivision. Resolution 28 authorizes the donation of Shreveport Police Department property. Resolution 29 authorizes the use of certain city-owned equipment by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. And Resolution 30 authorizes the donation of surplus property, specifically motorized vehicles and motorcycles, to the Shreveport Police Department, which is not needed for a public purpose to various political subdivisions.
Any questions from the members of the council? One, Lee, do you have any question? All right, introduction?
Introductions of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March 14, 2017. Resolution 34 adopts the Caddo Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is something that's required every five years, that the local jurisdictions adopt this plan before it can be submitted to FEMA as a region. Resolution 35 adopts the System Survey and Compliance Questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the state of Louisiana. Resolution 36 giving preliminary approval for the issuance of not to exceed $50 million of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds for the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, for the purpose of refunding the city's obligations under a loan agreement relating to an issue of Louisiana Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority revenue refunding bonds, Shreveport Utilities Systems Project Series 2005. Resolution 37 employing professionals with respect to the issuance of the city of Shreveport of not to exceed $50 million of refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the city's obligations under a loan agreement relating to an issue of LCD A revenue bonds, Shreveport Utilities Systems Project Series 2005, and not exceeding $120 million of water and sewer revenue bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems of the city. Resolution 38 declares the intentions of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, to issue water and sewer revenue bonds in multiple series in aggregated amount not exceeding $120 million for the purpose of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems for the city. Resolution 39 authorizes Mayor Ali S. Tyler to accept a donation of $13,500 from the Brookshires Groceries Company for the city of Shreveport to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department and the Shreveport Fire Department for equipment, those are proceeds as part of their hero's run. Resolution 40 authorizes the mayor to execute a donated agreement between the city of Shreveport and Southern Estates LLC herein called Owners, and acting herein through Naveed Akhtar, manager for the private sewer improvements for Dunkin' Donuts and related facilities.
Any question?
The link on, stand by, I lost it. The link on 34, I don't think works, or at least it didn't work for me.
IT health care?
We will.
Mine's not working either.
Refresh your page. Remember how we had to do that?
Some very nice pictures.
You got to go back out, and now reload it. I'm going to, yeah, that's taking me to the city website.
One of them, so you...
Go back up. There it is. Okay, got it. All right, problem solved. And then we'll be anxiously awaiting our report from the chairman on number 35 tomorrow, the annual mandatory report from the chairman of the council.
Vice chair will be assigned. Any other question? Okay, next.
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to March 14, 2017. Ordinance 25 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget. This is for the airport, for rehabilitation of their beacon lighting system out there that's provided completely by a LATODD grant. Ordinance 26 amends the 2017 general fund budget. Ordinance 27, just a second, right here. Okay. Ordinance 27 amends the 2017 grant special revenue fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein, and this is for $124,090 to be added to the fire department's grant that they had already received for SEBA replacement, that's the air packs that they use going into fires. Ordinance 28 amends the 2017 water and sewer enterprise fund budget. This provides funding for $56,800 to fill a vacant position in the finance purchasing department to assist with consent decree work that is coming in. Just to give you an idea, they've already processed as many requests in the first two months as they did in the first six months of last year, and it's taking its toll on the personnel that are still there and having to put somebody in there just to manage the consent decree projects that are going through purchasing. The companion to that is ordinance 29, it amends the 2017 general fund budget on the general fund side, placing the $56,800 in the accounts in order to hire that individual.
Okay. Any question?
I have, I put in a request to speak, but...
It's blank up here.
It's blank, and I keep...
Chair recognizes Councilman Jenkins.
Okay, and I apologize, Brian, because...
Not at all.
Resolution, I got four different ones. So, resolution 40, 40 is from the section above.
Got it.
Okay. Dunkin' Donuts, I assume it doesn't say the address.
Mansfield Road.
There's one that's in...
There's one's in your district. That's the one I thought it was initially on Yuri, but this is the one on Mansfield across from the Walmart in Councilman Flurry's district.
Okay, is there, and that may be from the prior, and maybe when I looked at it over the weekend, I was looking at the one that said District C, or is there another one on this?
Yeah, it should say Councilman Flurry's district. That's something that we'll have corrected by tomorrow.
Okay, but now on my agenda, it does say Flurry, but it didn't used to say.
Yeah.
It used to say C for sure.
On my original printout, it said Jenkins.
It did, okay. I was like, I haven't lost my mind here.
Not having a senior moment, it did say it.
Okay. And, and so, if it's his, then that, I was like, because the one in my district is in the middle of a parking lot, and I couldn't understand why we were accepting the water and sewer lines in the middle of a park, private property. Okay. Disregard. Okay, next, let me go to the $3 million for concrete. So, now we're ordinance 26.
Got it.
Okay, so that was, that was $3 million that came from where originally? I get it, that it, was it in a capital project?
The $3 million was allocated in the public works budget last year by the council. 1.5 million for Jewella, 1.5 million was for Linwood. We believe that that amount was going to be encumbered prior to the end of the year, so when we prepared the budget, we showed it as being expensed already. That did not occur, and so it didn't go into the fund balance, and so all we're doing now is adding the $3 million to the fund balance and putting the $3 million back into the public works account that it was in in 2016, so there's absolutely no change to the entire budget. We add $3 million to the fund balance at the end of last year, that we had showed being spent, it wasn't spent, and then we allocate that money, or you do, to the public works account, it goes right back into those accounts for those roadway projects.
And that was for the southern half of whatever, Linwood and...
And my city engineer has gone homesick today, but it was, it was Berkun's to about Mount Zion, in that area, and then the Jewella from, was it?
Mansfield Road to 132.
So, I mean, the reality, and I'm not, not, it's a criticism, but if we'd have known, we would have put it in with unallocated funds, and then it'd have been in the back...
If we would have known that it was not going to be encumbered before the end of the year, we would have appropriated into the budget for 2017 and just basically rolled it in there and put it in the fund balance, and it had not been spent, allocated it in public works.
Got it, but it would have been in the fund balance.
It would have been in the fund balance.
Fund balance.
Yes, sir.
And then we would have taken it from the fund balance...
Correct.
And then reallocated it to...
That's it. Yes, sir.
So, essentially, we have a, from a bookkeeping perspective, would have had a $1.5 million higher fund balance.
We would have had a $3 million higher fund balance.
I mean, reserve, truthfully, right?
No. Not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have impacted...
End of year fund balance, excuse me.
Because as soon as we showed on the fund balance, we show it going into public works, so it wouldn't have increased the reserve at all.
Okay.
The fund balance, you're correct, it would have increased it by $3 million.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Okay, next. Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. So that's a position, i.e. it's a personnel.
Yes.
And it's, that person is budgeted under finance or underwater and sewer?
Under finance, under the purchasing department. There is a position that is currently on the books that they don't have a person for.
So it's a gap, it's a...
It's a gap. They don't have the funding to fill that position. Water and Sewer needs additional assistance, just processing the consent decree work that is being pushed through purchasing, and a little bit of it is being held up because they don't have enough people over there. Again, they've done as many requisitions in purchasing for the consent decree in the first two months as they did in the first six months of last year. It's just because the work is picking up. So Water and Sewer is willing to pay for this position, to be in the purchasing office for a period of time to assist them with a consent decree project.
And then...
It should be in about three years.
It's about a three-year stint for this individual.
Okay.
Whoever it is. We haven't even put it out for advertisement until the council approves.
And we have some milestones that we have to meet this year and the next year with the CPA. And this position is going to be critical to us being able to meet those milestones.
Okay, and so, and this was kind of my next part of the question. So it's a, is it advertised as a three-year position?
It will be.
I, do we don't have to budget for any retirement or any of that, or we do, or...
The person will have an option to take a deferred compensation route if they know that the position is only going to be for three years, or they can pay into the city's retirement system with the hopes that potentially through attrition, maybe another position will become open in three years, and they will just move into that other position.
And this is just curiosity unrelated to this. Do we have many people in, in our employee base that fit the criteria of being in, I'm going to call it, temporary positions?
Right. No.
No.
Most of those positions are contracted out for a period of time, because this is such a long period of time. It's three years. It's not six months. It's not nine months. It's not a temporary fill, even though it's three years of a fill.
And is there any, and I'm just talking big picture budget issues. Is there any labor laws that preclude us from doing that with employees going forward in, not necessarily doesn't have to be in this thing, but in any part of our city?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'd be happy to investigate for you.
But we can take a look at it.
Okay. Because I've never heard, I mean, I've never heard of us having an employee for only a long enough period of time that they opt in or opt out of.
And I can, if I can just respond...
Yeah, just me. I mean, I'm just learning about this.
I knew the city government, but we did it all the time at the school system. When we had projects and we had to hire project managers, we would do it for three to five years. And then after that, they would be gone.
And they would, and they would pay into whatever laser, whatever it was for the school?
If they, if they, if they wanted to do it that way. They could have paid in social security or some other way. We didn't have different comp there unless you, unless you weren't an employee. But yeah, we did it in that form of government quite often with project managers.
And I think listing it in the advertisement that it is, so people know what it is when they, they have their eyes open going in that this is a three-year project and not anticipating that they'll have a full conversation about that unless something opens up.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that to me, because I certainly did not know about that. That's all my questions, thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, next.
I gotta find my place. Councilman had me going back.
Yeah.
Ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 18 amends the 2017 budget for the general fund. This is for the fire department as well. This is for their fire truck replacement that, that rolled over $354,000. Ordinance number 19 closes and abandons a portion of Billingham Street and an alley in the Bond Air subdivision in section seven, T-17 North, R-13 West. Ordinance 20, closing and abandoning the Seane Street dedication in the Food Junction subdivision in section 29, T-18 North and R-14 West. Ordinance 14 is a zoning ordinance, C-217. An ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located in the northwest corner of Linwood Avenue and Sugar Leaf Trail, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, LA, from D-1, I'm sorry, R-1D, urban one-family residential district, to B-3, community business district, to B-2A, business park district. Ordinance 21, zoning C-1217, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the north side of Mitchell, 280 feet west of Thornhill Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-1Z, urban one-family residential district, to B-1, SPI-6, buffer business design overlay district. Ordinance 22 is zoning C-1317, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Greenwood Road and Pines Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-A, residential agricultural district, to B-3, community business district. Ordinance 23 is zoning C-1417, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the east side of Farrar, 355 feet north of Baird Road, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-3, urban multifamily residential district, to B-1, buffer business district with use approval for a daycare. And then ordinance 24 is zoning C-1517, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances, rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Mylan and Christian Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R-3, urban multifamily residential district, to B-3, community business district with use approval for a reception facility.
Any question? Table legislation.
Mr. Chairman, I assume that we're going to remove, or you're going to remove, ordinance number 129 of 2016 from the table that concerns the Unified Development Code tomorrow. If so, I don't know if Mr. Swinney has a report that he wants to make, and we have some comments after that if you please.
Thank you. I will do a presentation for you tomorrow. It won't be, I'm not going to go over the whole thing again, because I think you've seen that song, the dancing song on that one. So I'm going to do just a very more focused presentation on these amendments that we've had conversations about over the last several weeks and focusing on that. You were given an executive summary that we emailed to you. You have a hard copy of the document with, with the revisions and the amendments included in blue. If you go through the document, you see the blue lettered items. That means that's where a change occurred. And we also have, we gave you a link to it, so you could observe it also online if you wanted to from our UDC website. And we will just simply waltz you through each component, and I'll answer questions. And I will have a present with us tomorrow. Our consultant from, from Chicago, Camero's Arista, will be with us to also answer questions that you may have. If I get down in the weeds and get lost somewhere, she can help pull me out of that. So we'll try to have, make ourselves totally available to you to answer anything or any concern you may have, so.
Mr. Swinney, are you getting any late inquiries from citizens regarding any aspect of the, of this document?
It is, I got some questions that were asked of us back over the last few days, but mostly clarification of those issues was mostly what they were asking for. Not really anything significant in terms of any changes that I'm seeing from anyone. When it's all said and done, there's probably about roughly 75 amendments that have occurred since October the 18th to this point in time. And so we have had an ongoing dialogue with certain key individuals to make certain that we answer their questions. Mostly, again, I'll come back to my, what I just said, it's mostly explaining and clarifying, not necessarily asking for additional changes.
And I appreciate that explanation and, and the effort. You know, we started back in, I mean, you know, we was part of the, of the community exhibits early on.
Right.
But when we got down to the meat of the matter back in October, when the amendments started coming in, I thought that was healthy. I thought that was being sensitive to, to aspects of, of this community.
Yes.
And gave them, and allowed, and we was willing to compromise and look at what's in the best interest of the whole. And, and the document that is now before us with, and I haven't read the final executive summary that you've submitted to us.
Sure.
But I will be prepared to consider it. But I just want to say, you know, in spite of, it's not a perfect document, certainly, but I thought the effort, the time, the dedication that, that had been put forward toward this for the last two years has been worthy of us coming to this, to the stage where we can look at it. I mean, we knew that the previous document was outdated. We still have preview over at this council.
Sure.
When, when there's something, you know, we could be accountable for things that was mentioned earlier today, certainly. But, but I just think you've, you pretty much have pretty much covered, covered all bases. And I hope the council is, like me, is prepared to move forward with this.
Well, we, our dialogue with the citizens and the business community and various organizations has been long and in-depth, but as you have said, it's been very productive because we at no time in the process took such a firm stand that we could not see a different pathway to something or a common ground. And so that's why this document has changed to really to be Shreveport's document and Caddo Parish's document, not anybody else's. And so our, our ordinance is going to be a little different from anywhere else, but that's okay. That meant that we didn't do a cookie cutter approach. We did something that we customized to the needs of our business community and our citizens. And so I will tell you that there's, as I've said before, there's no, no stone has been left unturned, and we've addressed as many things as possible. Now, did we make everybody happy? No, but I don't think you can ever make everybody happy. But I'll say this, that it will be a great beginning and a great start. And six months from now, if you guys see something that's not working, you tell us. We can begin the process of amending the document to make it even better. I thoroughly expect that. I don't expect it to be any other way. But at least we'll be starting at a level that really makes everything better for our community.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins?
Okay, one question, and I, I know y'all spent a lot of time on the tree ordinances, tree preservation. And I had somebody come up and ask me this question. I believe I answered it correctly, but in the document, I can't find where this is under consideration. So if somebody buys an empty parking lot, i.e. Shreveport Barksdale Highway is a good example, right? Zero green space at all on most of those lots over there. Somebody buys one, are they required to, as part of their redevelopment of a property, to then comply with the whatever percent, 15%, I don't remember what the percent is of green space?
And it depends. If they're coming in and they're taking an existing structure and they're not making, they're not expanding the building, and they're going to utilize the, the parking lot that they already have, they don't have to do anything at that moment. If they decide to come back and expand that building, let's say double the size of it, expand their parking lot, it is at that moment that they're required to bring up to standard and incorporate additional landscaping into the parking lot. And that's what most cities do. That's, it's kind of a triggering mechanism, because the whole intent is that there's a lot of older properties, and I know, I worked with Jeff quite a bit on this, older properties where you don't necessarily want to force them to have to, they don't have the option of providing the additional parking. So we, we've kind of created a pathway in there for older structures to give them greater latitude to be utilized, because it's one thing to want something to be improved, but if you don't allow some of your older buildings that can never get to square one on all the standards, then you don't, you're going to have fallow, unused buildings. And that's the, really the last thing we want to do. And so we actually built a pathway in there that actually spells out how that works. And so in most, if it's an older structure, an older development, we have options for them that gives them some leeway. If it's a situation where it's a, let's say, something that was built in the last 20 or 30 years, and they're trying to just utilize the space, they still don't technically have to do anything. But if they're going to come and expand the building or expand the parking lot, then they have to bring in the new requirements of landscaping and all that goes along with that. And again, the landscaping standards are not onerous. They're minimal standards. I want you to understand that. All cities approach landscaping, not all, there's a few that go beyond that, but we, we approach it from a minimal perspective. We're asking for you to break up your parking lot, put in some landscaping islands with some trees. We're asking you to put landscaping along the frontage of the, the road frontage area. It's things that can be accomplished without it being excessively expensive and it improves the property. And I always come back to something that the studies show that any, all properties that are landscaped or improved in that fashion, over a period of time, actually make more money, generate higher revenue, generate higher rental rates, and generate higher property taxes, and they actually are able to sell the property at a higher value. So sometimes folks look at it from a tunnel perspective and don't realize that any improvements made to a property ends up being a value that's returned to the property owner at some point in time. And that study, there's multiple types of studies that show that. And so that's why we realized we were on very strong footing to approach it, again, from a minimal perspective, but still allowing pathways there for older structures where you may not require them to add additional parking where it's not needed and where we still incorporate some level of landscaping. And we also, I don't mean to go on about this, we have alternative landscaping. Let's say somebody approaches me and says, well, Mark, this is not going to work in this area because of these factors that we have no control over. We'll, we'll work with them through the ordinance for what they call alternative landscaping design that will allow them to do some additional things that might give them an opportunity to redevelop the property without having to go necessarily the same pathway that everybody else has to, as long as it compensates and balances out. So those flexibilities are built into the UDC, and we purposefully went after that to make certain that was there.
Okay. And, uh, Councilman Corbin has, and then Councilman Lee.
I'm glad that Councilman Jenkins asked a question about landscaping, because it made me think about something. Catch me after the meeting, because I want to...
Sure.
I want to go into more detail with you, one-on-one about this. But we've got to be sure with these new developments, when we're approving a landscape plan, that we're taking into account power lines.
Yes.
After the meeting, we'll talk about a brand-new development. It's not even open yet.
Yes.
They just did their landscaping with fairly mature trees directly in line. And that frustrates me to no end, because then I know that 10 years down the road, we're going to have another conversation.
That's right.
But catch me after the meeting.
Sure. And I will, I will say, one of the neat things is, and you're absolutely right, Councilman Corbin, the difference with the UDC is you have to choose your plants from our plant palette that's in the UDC, and it has a line area section for street trees. It says, the trees can only grow so tall, so we won't have the repeat of the mistakes of the past. That's one of the neat things that's in the landscaping ordinance. It says, we don't mind you planting something, but don't plant a giant oak or pecan tree in where you're going to go right up into the power line, or pine tree. Plant something that'll only grow up to maybe 20 or 30 feet high and stops. So that's a great point, great point.
Councilman Lee.
Let me ask, how many actual amendments are there? Is it 55?
It's about seven, no, I, I think it's about 72 or 75. I didn't, my last count was about 72, if my memory is right. Remember, there was a set of, there was about 36 that were approved by the MPC board on October the 18th. Then after a lot of dialogue with a lot of groups, we had an additional 37 more that came. That's actually 73. We came forward through the work with, primarily with the Home Builders Association. That's where we got a lot of additional amendments. But they all, we worked to a compromise and figured out a best pathway for them. That's what was approved by the MPC board on February the 8th. So those additional ones, the additional 37 that I'm just now talking about, are the ones that are colored in blue in your, in your, in your booklet. And those are the changes that I'll be talking about tomorrow.
Okay, so just those?
Yes, ma'am. I won't go back, I won't go through all 73.
Okay, now you're going to give some shorter answers too tomorrow?
Yes, I'm sorry. I got a little, I got a little bit of preteritis in me, so I have a tendency to do that, so.
Okay. Now, did we decide... Now, did we decide if we're going to do a global or if we're going to take them one by one? I'm just curious.
Let me, I can speak to that.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to go over there when you finish.
Oh, okay. Now, Mrs., okay, thank you. Mr. Settle, you got all your questions answered? Mr. Settle? No, I'm just joking. I'll find, I'll talk to you after the meeting. Okay. All right.
I don't think that we can consider that.
No, you don't have to go back to the MPC.
All right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Now the appeals.
Oh, no, I think Art's going to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I kind of wanted to go over the way we envisioned this happening tomorrow. First of all, if you, you'll notice that there are three major documents involved. One is the ordinance, which is a two-page document, which you will be asked to adopt. Then if you look on your, on your agenda, e-agenda, you'll also see the minutes from a MPC meeting. That's just for informational purposes. Then you have a, the actual Unified Development Code itself, which is this document, or a document like this. And then you have the maps, which are included in and a part of what you will be adopting. So what we will, there, and you look on your agenda and there are several amendments. Amendment number one will not need to be considered tomorrow because those amendments are included in amendment number two. Amendment number two will not need to be considered tomorrow because those amendments have been included in the new Unified Development Code dated February 2017. And amendment number three will need to be considered tomorrow. Amendment number three is a substitute ordinance for the original ordinance that was included on the agenda. And in the substitute ordinance, it says that you will be adopting this document, which is the Unified Development Code for February 2017, and the maps for, that were adopted, that were recommended by the MPC on 2017. Now, in this document, there is one item that needs to be removed, and there is one item that needs to be added to it. So if you look on your e-agenda, you will have proposed motion. If you click on the proposed motion, it is, you will, we are recommending that somebody would move to adopt amendment number three with the following deletions and insertions. And it deletes the item that needs to be removed because it is no longer needed. It was the original Arsenault Amendment. They worked out an agreement so that that's not needed any longer. And in this new document, there are no fees. So the addition is a paragraph that says that the council and the commission will adopt another ordinance with fees in it. So it's just a paragraph that says that. So this is a proposed, the motion that we recommend that somebody would make, and if you do that, you will adopt this new ordinance, which then adopts the new code. Is that as clear as mine?
Would you say that again?
It does make more sense when you open the attachments. I happened to, not because I knew it would, but by circumstance, I happened to open one of these attachments to see that proposed motion. I didn't, I didn't understand what it was. And when I opened it, it was right before you started talking about it, and it did help me follow a lot better. So I do see that attachment there.
Now, that motion has to be tweaked a little bit, but that's essentially what it will say. And if there are any questions about it, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
But you keep raising up a book there that has maps. I don't have any maps.
You may not have this, but we will ask you. Mr. Swinney, can you get them copies of this?
Yes, we will have them.
We'll have that by tomorrow.
It actually addresses some of the things that you brought to our attention.
Okay.
With some of the map changes that you asked for.
Okay, got it.
I've found them on the webpage, though you have to have a pretty good computer to build some of those maps, but, because they are at a level of fidelity that it takes a little bit of time at least to generate. But if you go to the map deal, then you can really go through all.
The important thing is that you will be adopting the new code dated February 2017 with two exceptions. That's what all of that amendment was about, with two exceptions.
As a military man, I've always been taught, trust but verify. You are making it very challenging for me to be able to.
If I can confuse you, that would be good.
Mr. Bradford.
Just in front of order, I want to be clear. Mr. Attorney Settle raised the issue regarding an amendment that he was going to present tomorrow, and I'm hearing that that's out of order. What was the amendment and what was the process of hearing his inquiry?
Amendments to zoning ordinances or to the zoning map have a statutory, state statutory requirement that be first approved or disapproved by the MPC, and then subsequently, any appeal can be brought to. That matter can be subsequently approved or overturned by the city council.
So we're talking procedure or he hasn't?
Yes, procedurally, he needs to go, first presented to the MPC for review. They will either approve it or disprove it, disapprove it, and then it can be brought to the city council. That's under state statute. It's not a function of our ordinances, but it's required by state law.
And because we're taking this up tomorrow, it's pretty much going to be a, a, a process after tomorrow?
No, he still has the prerogative to take it to the MPC.
He does?
The MPC will consider it.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
It just, it won't be incorporated on tomorrow's vote.
I understand.
Any other questions? All right, then let's go to the field.
Yeah. We have one, Mr. Chairman.
What's the matter? Isn't it not working?
No.
Oh, there you go.
This case is 1722 Arlington. This is Councilman Bradford's district. This is a photo shot, all the photos are from this morning, so they may be a little bit dark. Right now, we have facial board that the owner needs to work on, but the main rotted portion of the structure, he's replaced the seals on the structure. This is on the north side of the structure, going around to the west side of the structure. He's torn out the back bedroom on the structure and reframed everything. He's got new seals up under there also. There's a new electrical service on the structure. And you can see the new seals going around on the back end of there. He's completely dug out around the seals on the south side of the structure and getting ready to replace those.
Mr. Chairman, as you can tell, if you saw the time, Mr. Green and his crew was out early this morning, and he decided to call and wake me up to tell me about this project. I went, I went by and looked at it. Mr. Green, you had a conversation with the owner. There are good faith work that's being done.
They've been working on it, and 60 days is what I recommended to kind of consider some of the weather issues that we've been having also, to at least get the back portion of it in the dry.
Chair and I move that we accept staff recommendation of postponing this for 60 days.
Second? Motion by Councilman Bradford, second by Councilman Mavers. Any discussion, please vote. Okay, motion passes six to one out of this. Okay. Next appeals, no alcohol, no other appeals. Report from boards and committees, anybody have report? Okay, and clerks report?
Mr. Chairman, we have a special meeting to be called immediately after this meeting to go into executive session to discuss Sand Beach Properties LLC versus the City of Shreveport.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Yeah, I move that we would go into executive session immediately following this work session to address the issue of Sand Beach Properties.
Yes.
I think we need to close this meeting.
Close this meeting. All right. Anything else in the clerks' report, Mr. Thompson?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Short and sweet. Okay, just a few communications from the mayor?
No, sir, thank you.
Members of the council?
I just have a brief one. I have a friend of mine coming to make a presentation about networks and fiber optics tomorrow. The only man that is a real inspiration in terms of his career and what he's doing professionally. It should be an interesting presentation.
Okay. Chairman.
Mayor, I'm just going to say this because I'm just going to say it, you don't have to respond, but I will say that I was concerned as well as somewhat disappointed reading in the newspaper from the Polish Union President. I thought your responses was right on, but I thought that if that conversation would have been a part of our budgeting equation, I think we could have maybe further considered some of the issues that was forthcoming from his remarks. So, and I don't know how we would, as an administration, as a council, even address it at this time. You have, you have any ideas?
Well, let me just comment. I'm not sure which article you saw, but I would say that if it's coming from someone other than the administration, you might need to check with us before you make any comments about it, because a lot of those comments are not accurate. We did get some feedback from one of the media outlets, but most of the information was presented was really inaccurate. So why don't you talk to me offline?
I will.
Talk about that.
Yeah, I will.
Because, I mean, we've addressed, you know, everything that we could address from the budgeting process, and I think probably if you read something, it was misinformation. So let's talk about it.
I will, Mayor, you know, but the, but the, and I don't know how we categorize it, that we will, we're training people to lose them, I thought was disingenuous to say.
Well, if it's not coming from us.
I agree.
Please, sir, talk to us offline.
Okay.
All right.
Well, yeah, in regards to, Mr. Washington, in regards to the community meetings, have, tell me what have transpired to prepare our constituents for those, for those meetings.
Councilor Lee, council administration. As of now, we have forwarded all information out to your office as well as working with the city council office to make sure the information was put out. We have done Facebook advertising as well as, it will be in the Shreveport Sun this week, as well as we've posted memos at the downtown terminal, all shelters throughout the city, as well as we will be doing additional advertising as handouts on each day of those as requests from the mayor's office on the buses from the drivers.
I'm going to hit a few corners, too.
And Councilwoman Lynch did stop by on Friday, and then we provided her a copy of the memo so she could pass out in her district. I did send each one of you an email asking if you wanted that same treatment, we would provide that to you.
Yeah, well, I posted mine on my email, I mean, my Facebook page, trying to get that especially, and then some in boxes for some people, but I, you know, I just don't know specifically who rides the bus in my district. So hopefully we just do a shotgun.
One of the things I actually talked, Mr. Thompson, about before is we're trying to get a copy of your neighborhood association updated list. We're going to try to forward that information out. So if you have email addresses that you know you would like us to send it to, feel free to reach out, send me an email, we'll get that information out.
We can forward that to you.
You forward that to me, and my office will definitely get it out for you.
One thing that they are doing is advertising on the buses themselves, which is the best. You're going to hit the target, right, then, if they're on. So, I mean, it is, it was, you know, smart.
Especially buses going to these specific zones, I mean, that's, that's.
Every bus has a sign on it. Downtown terminal probably has 20 or 30 signs around the facility.
I noticed you almost have like a promoted post or something on some of the social media networks.
We did. It's on Facebook, we did do advertising on Facebook as well as Twitter, so it is out on media.
And I had a meeting and, a part of, a community meeting in one of the areas in my district that has real high ridership last week. And, you know, we announced that there, several people already knew about it, those that didn't were excited to hear about it. So, you know, I think it's a, I hope we have good participation. The interest level was high.
Yeah, my final question was, Mayor, we received a email regarding the C-SPAN bus coming into the city on Friday. We also have on Friday a governmental, internal governmental meeting. And I would so like to see that bus. You think, you think somebody could get the bus to come by?
I tell you what, on my account, we're going to be at the governmental meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's not my meeting.
We had gotten an email earlier about concerning another appeal, a ZBA appeal. Has that officially been filed?
Are you talking about the one that was?
Was it today?
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't know if that was an official appeal yet or somehow it was just emailed to us or?
No, I think it was meant as an appeal, but I haven't done the letter yet. I think it was today, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
So I'll be getting a letter.
That particular situation has a lot of background information that is soundly familiar. Be helpful to get a full briefing from the departments who've been working with them because there's a lot to that one.
What was represented was not 100% accurate?
Well, I didn't read the whole appeal. I just have been talking to various parties in that, and I know that they disagree strongly on how they see the same situation.
There are two sides of the story, the unique scenario.
There are.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Lynch for her recognition for International Committee for Women. Is that, did I get it close?
Close.
Congratulations, Stewie. Any other comments?
Yeah, right. Oh, no.
Notice is hereby given that this time, the Shreveport City Council will now hold a special meeting, and it's called to order. Invitation will be given by Councilman Bradford, please.
Mr. Dan?
We can't do it out here. You've got to announce it's going to be a special session, right? Executive session?
Special meeting after the opening.
Executive session.
Executive session.
Okay.
Okay, let us pray. We thank you, Father, for what has transpired here during our work session. We thank you for enlightening us with your spirit and that all we have done is for the betterment of this city. Now, Father, as we prepare to go into our special meeting, we pray your presence there and direct us. Thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ask the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to be front of order. Is this matter of confidentiality that we may need to return to the back?
We will, we will.
Okay, after we call the roll, okay.
Present. President.
Councilman Bradford, Councilman Everson.
Yeah.
Councilman Jenkins.
Rose.
Councilman Corbin.
President.
Councilman Blurry.
Here.
Councilwoman Lynch.
Here.
And vote.
Mr. Chairman, just for everybody, we have on the agenda, to ask whether or not there are any public comments before we actually go into, before the motion is made to go into executive session.
Are there any public comments?
No.
There's none.
No.
We were.
Motion?
A motion to go into executive session pursuant to LSA RS 4216 and RS 4217A2 to discuss matters relative to the following Sand Beach Properties LLC versus the City of Shreveport, docket number 596181, First Traditional District Court. That motion is in order.
I move that. Second. Okay, motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion? Please vote. That motion passes. And we'll go.